And appear so, yes.
Okay.
All the important people.
Well, let's move on to item four B then. Discuss request to rezon 3.35 acres in the Amber Ridge PUD from commercial to high-density residential.
This is Aaron Wolf with the Community Development Department, Jerry's Homes, which is to rezone 3.35 acres and parcel D of the Amber Ridge PUD. Cindy, if you would, there's a vicinity map that I included as an attachment with the staff report. If you could open that up, that would be helpful. And the 3.35 acres I'm referring to is immediately south of Northwest 62nd Avenue. It's west of the commercial building that was just constructed in the last year or so. And when that pops up, I think the vicinity map will help to show us which parcel we're talking about. There we go. The subject property is shown there in the crosshatch. At the corner of Northwest 100th Street and Northwest 62nd Avenue, the southwest corner, of course, is the Casey's, I believe it's Casey's perhaps has come and go, that's been there for a number of years. Immediately west of that is the commercial structure that was developed by Jerry's Homes within, I believe it was approved in 2018 and constructed, completed about a year after that. It's sitting there immediately west of the gas station. And the 3.35 acres we're referring to is immediately west of that. It's currently zoned for professional commerce park uses and community retail commercial uses. And they would like to construct 28 town home units on this parcel. It would be an extension of the town home units that are immediately south of this. The vicinity map's a little small, but if you were to zoom in on that, you would see there's a number of town home units immediately south of this parcel. Yep, there you go. Some of those are all are currently constructed, but the aerial doesn't show them. At any rate, this PUD, it was originally created in 2003, and to take a very liberal interpretation of the PUD, it would have allowed for up to four, 544 residential units. And the PUD has been amended several times over the years. And currently throughout this PUD, there are 603 residential units, and that is a combination of town homes and in high-density residential apartment units. So currently at 603 units total. That would be approximately 11% increase over what was originally forecast when the PUD was created in 2003. The requested change to allow another 28 units would be a 16% increase over the original density. And when we look at the comprehensive plan, the Thrive 2040 Plan that was just recently adopted, it depicts the area as mixed use. This being a standalone town home project, it would not comply with our comprehensive plan. The property owner is asserting there's an excess of commercial property available in Johnston and the surrounding communities, and these properties can't be developed viable as a commercial use. However, staff would note that the other commercial properties that they have provided as examples are more suitable for, you know, to the, to the, to the West and Grimes, those are more suitable for highway service, commercial. Other examples they provided, they list some town center properties, but I think both in Grimes and Johnston. Again, those are maybe intended more as community gathering nodes and not intended really as neighborhood commercial opportunities like this one, which is intended to serve the immediate needs of the surrounding neighborhood, which as of this time is already quite dense. When you look at both this Adam Ridge development with the various town home parcels, the high-density residential parcels. But north of Northwest 62nd Avenue, there's, there's another apartment complex there as well, Providence Point, which has a great number of high-density residential units there. We've got some other town home units in the, in the near vicinity. Really what I'm saying is there's, there's quite a bit of density in this neighborhood already that drives the need for some, some support commercial to serve the neighborhood. As further evidence that neighborhood commercials needed at this location, I would point out that Phase One of this, of this plat, which, which you do see there on the vicinity map, that's the commercial building immediately west of the, of the gas station. That was approved in July of 2018, and it was sold a little more than a year later. There's currently a 0% vacancy rate in that building, even despite the challenges that have been posed by the COVID epidemic. Of course, tonight, this is not a vote on a rezoning, rather we're simply gauging the opinion of the council on your proclivity to rezone the piece. If you are favorable to doing so, they would have to submit a rezoning application, and I would send out notice to the applicable area around the parcel, and we would schedule a public hearing, et cetera. I would note, even though I haven't sent out public notice, because this is an official request at this time, we have heard from a member of the public, Paul Wandersheid, and his comments came in after the staff report was published, but David was able to add them to the, to the, to the agenda, so those should have been available to you to review. He's simply saying he's against more residential at this location, and he's, he supports leaving the zoning as it is. Again, that was without sending out any, any type of public notice. I think we've got some representatives here with us tonight. Of course, I can't see the, at this time, I can't see the attendees list. But I believe we have a representative for Jerry's Homes with us tonight, and I would turn it over to them to add any commentary they would like.
Mayor, City Council, I want to thank you for allowing us to speak to you this evening. This is Jake Cowan, Director of Land Development for Jerry's Homes. We're located at 3900 West Town Parkway in West Des Moines. Yeah, we are, we are coming to you to request the rezoning of this last 3.35 acres. With that first building, which was in 2018, the agreement was that if we were to get those, we're allowed to build those row homes, that we would build a building right away, which we did. I think it's a very, very attractive building. It all went very well. We tried to lease that building for six to eight months with zero interest. We were lucky enough to have a buyer come in and make an offer, which we negotiated a price that worked for everybody. The, the person purchased the building. They purchased the building with the intention of taking two and a half of the bays from that building for their suntan city. He had a very hard time. It was probably another year before he leased the, there's a new bar there on the outside unit. And just last year, or the beginning of this year, that building owner took another space and a half. So that owner, that building occupies two-thirds of the building. He's got two tenants. It took him over two years to occupy the space. Doing, doing our research and investigation of the area, there is an absorbent amount of commercial space. However, it's designed to be used. We didn't get specific enough to figure, figure out exactly what the land was going to be used for. We just saw it as being zoned as commercial. In doing a little bit of research, we did find that there's approximately 160 acres of land that is for sale currently in the Johnston area. Over 50, over 50% of it is in Johnston, with some of it in Urbendale very close, and some of it in Grimes very close as well. We did also notice in, in there was mentioned that there's a couple of town centers coming up, one in Grimes and one in Johnston. The total on those, whether they'll be for a gathering, there is also a lot of office space, retail space, and restaurant space that will be, that is planned for those areas. That will include about 87,800 square feet of space that will be available for restaurants, for businesses, for offices. So we, we just see it as, as a pretty substantial challenge for us to successfully be able to, to, to build two more buildings here and have them be occupied in a reasonable amount of time, you know, to invest the amount of money to, to develop those properties and to build the buildings. And then to have the building sit for a substantial amount of time is, is, is really economically unsound for us to make that decision. So I guess I've, I've made my case. I'm open to any questions at this time.
Anybody have any questions?
So Jay, this is Councilman Cope. Do you, does, do you guys have any other commercial space that you own or lease out kind of in the Johnson Grimes area right now, or in, in urban, in this part of the metro?
Yeah, Tom, we do not. We, this is the only commercial property that we own. Period.
Yeah, I just was kind of wondering what maybe sort of a sense you were getting as far as other similar type properties. I mean, I know you've, you've obviously listed other properties. I mean, some of those are, I mean, I think your, your, a lot of your competition will be, you know, you guys are obviously fairly close to the high school. And so in some ways, I think that provides a real opportunity for commercial in that space. And obviously, any property that, that is along kind of a major street, like a 62nd Avenue, I think from a council standpoint, we're very hesitant to turn that over, because once we make this decision, it's kind of a decision that you make. You know, obviously, it's a rezoning, so it's a decision you make over a series of three meetings. So that's a six-week period of decision-making that lasts forever. Once it goes, the use of that property is for that purpose. That's, that's what the use will be, you know, for history. And so I think it's, it's very challenging for us to make that decision to, to, you know, bypass commercial opportunities, especially because one of the things we certainly hear from our residents is a real strong desire for more commercial. And obviously, you know, given the fact that that one building has been successful, even as, as, you know, more successful than other properties in the city, you know, it's, you know, it's hard, it's, those two factors, I think, make it hard for me as a member of the council. Despite, I think you make a compelling case, it's hard for us to make the decision to, to allow this sort of prime commercial space to, to not be developed as commercial property.
Well, I would like to, to respond to that and with, with, with two, two items. And that, one being that, that the building that's there currently, again, the building owner is occupying two-thirds of the building. He, he had a very hard time leasing it. He came up with another franchise opportunity and, and occupied the end of the building. So he's, he's occupying four of the six spaces in that building. So he did lease them, he just occupied them. So as far as the, the success of, of lease rate along this corridor, we, we actually were very optimistic when we built the building, thinking, oh, gosh, you know, the high school is there, we're going to get tons of traffic, there's going to be so many high school kids coming here, there's probably going to be a sandwich shop, or a, or a pizza place, or something for the kids to, you know, to, to spend their money. And it just didn't happen. The other thing I'd like to point out is that there's, there's a vacant commercial piece of property to the northwest corner of our property, and then also to the east of Casey's that, that's been there as long as our property has been here. You know, I don't know, 15-plus years with zero interest. If, if, if we hadn't come to the mayor and city council in 2018, requested the rezoning, and let us put in those, those row homes, this whole parcel would still be sitting bare. We would just be mowing it. It would be, it wouldn't be creating any tax dollars. It wouldn't be bringing any new residents to the city. You know, and we're just, we, we did do a little bit of research on, on the tax, taxation value of the one building and compared it to the total number of row homes that are there, or actually the, the total number of row homes that we would be building. And in a one-year period, we would actually be generating, when, when it was full, when everybody was occupied there, 28 units would generate more taxable income for the city than if they were two commercial buildings. And over 10 years, it'd be a little over $200,000 of additional tax income. I know that's not the main focus here, but I'm, I'm just trying to, try to present my case, our case, more solidly to get you guys to really to think of it, maybe from a business aspect, to, to really, I mean, the 3.35 acres of the 100-plus acres that are in this area of commercial property, you know, 3.35 acres is just such a small amount, and it would finish this area. It would be done, it would be clean, it would be mowed and irrigated and landscaped, generating tax money, and it would just be finished. So.
Jay, let me just ask you one additional question. You know, the, as a city, we have just recently kind of reviewed on our comprehensive plan for the city. Did you have any discussions with city staff or the folks who are working on that about seeking a change in that designation as part of that process?
Sorry, no, I have, I did not, and have not.
So, so Jay, maybe just to add to what Councilman Cope has already said. You know, I think you've given us something to think about here. But, you know, I'm, I'm hesitant to move in the direction that you want us to right now on this piece of property. We have so little opportunity for commercial development in our community. And this is, you know, this is a piece of property right on one of our, you know, main thoroughfares through the community. So even though you say there's other properties around that could be developed commercially, I mean, this is one of the best spots along 62nd Avenue to develop commercially. So I, you know, I, you, you've given, given me something to think about, but I'm not, I'm not convinced tonight, particularly in a time of pandemic, and, and we've seen, you know, a real depressed economic environment out there right now. I'm, I'm not prepared tonight to say that this is, you know, this is the direction we want to go on this piece of property.
And I appreciate your honesty, Mayor. As far as timeline, if you, this is really just for you to consider our request. We are moving ahead with the Windsor Row Homes, which that will be, you know, we should get that dirt developed this year yet, and then start building buildings right away. So it'd probably be a couple of years or so before we get through that, and actually would have, you know, come to a point where we would be ready and probably present it again at that time to maybe have you reconsider, or have you think about it a little more seriously. It, it really, it's just been a very, very successful product for us. It's very affordable, and, you know, I'm not going to pitch it anymore, but we're just, we're very happy with the success we've had with this, this type of building and this type of development. And that's really the main reason why we thought, hey, this is coming to a close, we're selling them, this is great. We really didn't have any success commercial-wise, so let's present it. Let's see if, see what the city council and the mayor thinks, and, you know, if you guys think about it. And in a couple of years, we revisit it, and all the majority of the properties that are vacant commercial-wise today are still vacant at that time, or through the pandemic. Maybe, maybe we'll see in a different light.
Jay, if, if I may, Mayor, City Council members, this is Adam Grub. I'm actually the owner and president of Jerry's Homes. A decent segue and a good point of clarification. It is not Amber Ridge, it is Adam Ridge. And I am Adam. And, you know, my dad named it after me when I was, you know, a young guy. And that was a long time ago. My family had owned this piece for about 15 years. And as I've, you know, moved up and now acquired the business, this was part of my acquisition with my dad. And it, it was certainly something that has been a point of discussion in our family constantly. And in our business, my cousin Eric Grub and my dad partnered on the piece that is there existing. And it was something that I think out of great, I don't know, pause, if you will, that we, we, Dad's like, hey, we gotta do something, I gotta push something, I gotta try to get something to go. And like Jay said, we really didn't get any phone calls, we didn't get any feedback. I think we got a lucky phone call from a guy that, that was an end user. And like Jay said, he uses two-thirds of the building. He had a very difficult time getting the rest of it leased out. We've reached out to him repeatedly. His Realtor was Jeff Stanbrough, Stanbrough Realty. Really up and down the line, just in terms of talking to my friends, other brokers, I'm in the brokerage business. I come through the Realtor side of things. And just the overwhelming feedback that we get in terms of that commercial use and that commercial space, they either want to go to 86th Street, Merle Hay, or down to Highway 141. And it's been really a challenge even to get, A, the phone to ring, or get feedback from developers. We don't own other pieces like this. Actually, in my acquisition, it was a big topic of negotiation with, with, with my dad and I, because it's just, we're not a, we're not a commercial developer. So we've turned to a lot of commercial developers to help give us insight, and, and we just really don't get any real positive feedback. So much of the, of, of the demand is up on 86, 141. And that's really the main basis of our request today, is we don't see any near-future use for this piece. We do have great demand on those row homes. It offers a really good home at a fair price in the community. Obviously, we bought the other piece and want to continue to do that. This has been something ironically that started before I even got in the industry, and then I started selling these as condos when I started getting into the industry over 15 years ago. It's just been a huge point of discussion in, in my family and in our business on what to do with this piece. And, and we just do not get interest in it. Like I say, in, in terms of that commercial use. So that's really the main basis, I think, of our requests, like Jay articulated. We have something in, you know, to the south there in those row homes that really provides a really good use in the area, a really good use in the community. It does offer a lot of affordable housing that is not currently in the area. And these are young kids that don't want to rent, they want to own something, but they're just not ready to afford a house yet. You do get a lot of, you know, single parents, young parents, you do get empty nesters, divorces. I mean, it just, it is a good offering to a lot of different people. It's not something we're interested in renting out. It is something we want to do for sale. It is the first thing my wife and I bought when we got married. So it's just, it's so many of those folks from the condos, that's really the driver of demand there, is people that are getting out of renters, and then they're becoming a homeowner, they're staying in Johnston. And then our goal is to be able to move them up. The challenge is, is, is now we're running out of space in Johnston. So now we're trying to pull them to Grimes, or we're pulling them to, to surrounding areas. We, Pinewood Glen has been a really good community for us. We really don't have a lot of other single-family in, in that 250 to 325 price point. So that's really been a huge basis, I think, of our ask is, is it really meets what has been a great demand over the last 15 years? What we see is a, a demand over the next three to four. Unfortunately, the feedback that we get from the brokerage community is, is the need and the demand is not there on the commercial space in this location.
Thank you, thank you, Adam, for that additional perspective. Again, you know, I, I think you've given us something to think about, but I think we need to, need to, need a little more time to think about it.
Yeah, and I would just add, I think maybe the Economic Development Committee or needs to maybe direct staff to, you know, one of the things we've, we historically do is kind of take a little bit of, break the city down a little bit and look at different areas. We did that as part of the comp plan, and maybe this area around 62nd and 100th. We need to kind of look at more closely and ask for some, some kind of in-depth look at, at what we need to, you know, do we have enough density of activity? And obviously, you know, the more homes we have there, that helps, rooftops helps drive commercial development, but kind of figuring out what the right balance is. I think we, we, you know, we could look at, at spending some time looking into those issues and seeing how the, the various properties in this area have the best way to develop and, and use that as a way to figure out what this area is going to look like over the next three to five years.
It's certainly something we're, you know, our, our appetite to, to finish out this, you know, project is, is strong. But at the same time, I think we're open to suggestions, and I think working with staff and working with council to, to find a good use for the community here. I mean, it is our goal to, to build in the community and build the rest of this out in a way that works. And, yeah, I, I think we're certainly open to that. I think we'd like to be a part of that discussion. Like I said, this is something that I have reached, recently acquired from my family, and it's something that I'd love to do something with. And it didn't have that prospect in the near future, which is why we came here today in, in the way that it's currently zoned. And if there are opportunities and other uses that, that would be a win-win in there, we certainly want to participate in that, because it's, it's definitely something that the market is very active, and we'd like to get something going on it.
And Adam, we appreciate you bringing it to us tonight. As Councilman Cope has suggested, we, we can have the conversation internally and, you know, see where that conversation takes us.
Well, we very much appreciate you, Tom.
You bet. Thank you, and look forward to seeing the town homes being built up the street here, so.
So do we.
Okay, we have one additional item on the work session this evening. And that is pulling up my agenda here, the community survey, open-ended response concerns.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is Janet. Before you, and the attachment, from the community survey that we did in 2020, we had some open-ended questions where residents could write information in, things they were looking for, things that they would like to see within some of the departments. I tried to kind of categorize these based on departments with a unified theme. Some of them are road projects, some are just updates on where we are with things, parks and trails. And so I had reached out to the council members to ask, depending on the committee that they sit on, if they would feel comfortable to do a quick little video, about a minute to a minute and a half, just to quick, provide a quick update. We can also provide this communication on our website so that residents have a place to go to receive this information if they are not on social media and receive their communication that way. So I think most of the council members did reach out to me and said that they would be willing to do that. We would put together a script that they would be able to talk off of. We can certainly work together on that. And I'm looking to get this information pushed out here within the next month or two. It'll take a while to get everyone in, to put these messages together and push them out. But I didn't know if anyone had any questions or any additional information that they would like input on, or.
No, Janet, I think you, you've done a nice job of putting together the, the, the list of items that were identified by the residents, as well as the potential responses. I think it, again, just illustrates, you know, how much we are doing in the community, and we just need to make sure that our residents are aware of everything that is going on. I would suggest that Jim Evans be the one that gets in the kayak and goes down Beaver Creek here within the next couple of weeks.
Are you up for that?
Let's do it.
It might be frozen, but we'll see if we can make way.
Yep.
Well, this is, this is, this is good. Look forward to seeing the videos, little videos.
And if we need you for any mayor, we will certainly reach out to you and let you know as well. But I think this would provide, you know, the residents updated communication on really what's going on. And not only just pushing these videos out now, but thinking about the future on committees you sit on, maybe updates that could be provided for future. So I know we do the survey every two years, but I think this could be a continuous thing that we continue to do to provide updates, so.
Absolutely.
Janet, was there any, any of these topics that, any of these that got repeated more regularly in, in open-ended? It's a little bit hard to get a sense of the intensity. You know, one of them was mentioned once, or it was mentioned 10 times. Was in looking at the op-eds, or not the op-eds, the open-ended, was there two or three that got mentioned the most?
The ones on the first page were the ones that were mentioned the most. The ones on the other pages were not mentioned as often, but I thought that they were important to dog parks. I know that's on the second one, but that was mentioned several times as well. So I think, but the ones on the first page were the ones that were mentioned the most. So.
Perfect. Thank you for that.
So once I put together the scripts, if you have modifications, feel free to do that. We can work back and forth and I can work with the directors on making sure that information is all in there. So we look forward to working with all of you as we put together these videos to inform the residents.
Okay. Well, thank you, Janet. That takes us up to the end of our agenda here, which is a good thing because we have run out of time for the work session. So with that, we will adjourn the work session and we'll all move into the regular session. Thanks all.